Hey, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the February 25th, 2020 meeting of the Joplin School's Board of Education, regular session. Pat, roll call, please.
Lori, Esther's here.
Derek Gander.
Present.
Dr. Joseph.
Here.
Dr. Ford.
Present.
Brent Jordan.
Present.
Deborah Woods.
Here.
Sherri German.
Here, thank you, Pat. Will everybody please join in? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Board members, have you had an opportunity to review the agenda this evening? Ask for a motion to approve it?
So moved.
Second.
Derek, thank you, Deb. It's been moved and seconded that we have approved the agenda as presented. Please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes, that takes us to our celebrations. I beg your pardon, I have a note that Pat gave me, so I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda. Had I read what was given to me, we would be in better form. So, move the regular agenda number seven, this is JHS number one, on computer devices, and number one position on the regular agenda, is that correct?
If you want to just move it from number seven to number one.
Okay, thank you, Pat, I'm sorry, and I apologize, board members, that's my mistake. We've been asked to move the item number seven up to number one. Do I have a motion to approve that amendment?
I would move that we approve the removal, or moving of number seven.
Second, Pat. Brent, and thank you, Derek, it's been moved and seconded that we approved an amendment to our agenda, our regular agenda, from number, item seven to item number one. Please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes, that does still take us to our celebrations, and I'm happy to inform the folks tonight that our seventh graders go to work. Our FTC instructors and students welcomed 120 E. M., East Middle School, South Middle School, seventh graders to a hands-on career exploration day. The seventh grade students rotated through the welding, construction, agriculture, animal vet tech, computer information systems, agricultural, horticulture, agriculture, agriculture, greenhouse, and engineering programs, and were engaged at every station. Not sure that I did a very good job of going through that, but it looks like we were pretty busy with framework tech. Great stuff. All Americans. Three Joplin High School seniors, Sam Peterson, Janine Crawford, and Spencer Breland, have earned the National Speech and Debate Academic All-American Award. This award recognizes high school students who have earned the degree of superior distinction, 750 points, completed at least five semesters of high school speech and debate, demonstrated outstanding character and leadership, and earned a GPA of 3.7 on a four-point scale. Fewer than 2% of the students in the 141,000-member organization earn the annual academic All-American Award. Congratulations. Practice makes perfect. Middle school students do a practice run of presenting their projects for the upcoming National History Day and Lowell Milken Center's Unsung Heroes Contest, scheduled for March 6th at MSSU. National History Day, Brecklin Shelley, an individual exhibit and process paper, The Discovery of Insulin, Chronicles the Development of Insulin, and Lowell Milken Center's Unsung Heroes, that Eily Branstadter, digital art, The One Who Saved Many, Chair Ami, A Pigeon Who Saved 194 People in the Last Battalion in World War I. That's on the left, and on the right is a small-town country changer, Emily Newell Blair, a woman born and raised in Carthage, Missouri, who protested and helped women gain the right to vote. Neat digital art that she produced there. Stapleton Students SOAR. Eleven Stapleton Elementary students and two teachers make up the SOAR team. The team plans and undertake service projects each month for the school and community. The team places the SOAR Word of the Month on the school's fences. This year, the words "respect," "bully-free," "honesty," "generous," "gratitude," and kindness have been displayed.
See it every morning.
Do you?
Yeah.
Good.
It's a daughter of school.
Good. In October, first grade students decorated treat bags, and the SOAR team raised money for candy and donated to the goodie bags to Children's Haven. In November, Stapleton students collected 2,700 canned goods that were donated to watered gardens, and in December, kindergarten classes made Christmas cards for residents of the Memorial Hills Assisted Living Center. The SOAR team delivered the greetings and carol for the tenants. Great job, guys. College Bound. Anthony Ratliff, Joplin High School Speech and Debate Team, has been admitted to Culver-Stockton College for the fall 2020 semester. He was awarded the Trustee Scholarship for $13,000 a year. The scholarship was awarded based upon academic credentials and is renewable. Great job, Anthony. Plastic Bags. This is by Nathan Goswick. I knew some Goswick's in my time in school, I'll tell you. Fantastic filmmaker Nathan Goswick, a Joplin High School junior, entered his film Plastic Bags in the One Earth Film Festival. The film won first place and will be shown at the Gene Siskel Film Center in Chicago in March. Nathan was awarded a $350 prize, another $350 will be donated to the Plastic Oceans, a group that creates films about the dangers of plastic to our environment. Great job, Nathan. Lots of celebrations, my goodness. Media Showcase, JETHD, Jet HD, perhaps that's a correct phrase.
Yes, Jet HD.
Was a big winner at this year's MSSU Media Showcase. The showcase included 13 area schools and 300 entries. Joplin School's first-place winners are Passion for Video, honoring Will Newton Norton, pardon me, by Samantha Walker; Documentary, Mexico Documentary, by Nathan Goswick; Comedy, Jack Attack, by Jack Carey; Sports, Undefeated Joplin Football, by Jack Carey; Animation, Ballad of the Lady, by Nathan Goswick. Really great things going on in our media departments that are in our school system. Really, really impressive. So, congratulations to everybody, and thanks for all your hard work. That takes us to the Board of Education Policy Committee Report. Brent, or Deborah?
I'll just mention that we have seven new policy updates on the agenda this evening. These were originally sent back to MSBA for some modification approval, and they've been sent back, so they'll be on the agenda tonight. Six of those relate to requirements that districts now, ours in particular, that will have to share information about former employees of sexual misconduct allegations with students as required by law, so. And then the final policy deals with, it revises how students are enrolled, and there's some changes, and some of those are families of military will no longer have to be present, so they can do so remotely or online when they enroll their students. Also, there's some changes in regards to custody disputes, whether or not to use social security numbers, and then how to prove the age of a child, so those are in those new policy updates. And then, of course, there's 13 policies that will be in second reading tonight, so. We did not have a meeting, but those are the things that have come down since then, so.
Thank you, Brent. Does anybody have any questions of Brent or Deborah concerning our policy committee? Thank you, that'll take us to our superintendent's data report.
Okay, the first thing that we have there is Ms. Linda Dishman is with us tonight, and we are going to hear an update from Joplin Adult Education and Literacy.
Hi, it's so nice to be with you tonight. Thank you for having me, it's an honor, and thank you for all you do for the schools. Most people know that we help participants prepare for the HISA, formerly the GED, it's just a different brand now. And the good news is that the state is now paying for the HISA test for people. It's free, and it used to be almost $100, so we're really thrilled about that. We have open drop-in hours now. We are at 123 South Main. We have a lease agreement with the City of Joplin and Joplin Schools, which we really, really value. We are open now from 8:30 in the morning until 8:00 at night, without closing a single minute. And Friday mornings from 8:30 to 12:30, and this enables people to work around their jobs and be home with their children, and it fits all their schedules, their busy schedules. I'd like to share some other important courses that we offer in addition to preparing for the HISA. We have English second language classes for people whose first language is not English. We have classes from Monday to Thursday evenings, from 5:00 to 8:00, and they're leveled now. They're not just multi-level classrooms, they are beginner, intermediate, and advanced, so those programs have improved a lot, too. We also prepare individuals for post-secondary opportunities, such as College and Franklin Technology Center. We can prepare them for any entrance exam, the military's ASVAB, the nurses' TEES or HESI-A2, the TAE for dental assistant and medical office assistant, for example, and the Accuplacer, or the ACT for college and university. When the students come, we give them a diagnostic assessment to find out exactly what they need to work on. That way, we don't give them things they don't need, and they get a really nice printout of things they need to work on, and then their areas of next focus. And they can work on it individually with an educational learning guide, and we also have group sessions throughout the week. Parents are invited to come and study, too, so they can help their children with homework. I was always happy to be able to do that with my kids, so adults can come and study for any reason. And this all creates, you know, as you know, a really good trickle-down effect, because if the parents are more educated, then our Joplin School's kids will be, too. We have a graduation ceremony for our HISA graduates every June, and we really appreciate Dr. Moss speaking there. We like having it, too, at the Joplin Performing Arts Center, it's a very nice facility, we appreciate that very much. It's really nice for the people who thought that they could never graduate to be able to do so, give them a second chance. We met our federal targets the past three years, had to throw that in. Our three-year program grant is due March 20th, and so I'll have it ready for Dr. Moss's signature March 3rd. Do you have any questions?
I'm sure glad you came this evening, because I just learned everything you said.
Fantastic.
That was all new to me, I didn't realize that
Oh, good, I'm glad I could share.
The GED is not something that we're using anymore, it's HISA, is that what it is?
It stands for High School Equivalency Test.
Thank you.
It's one of three types. There are, I think, 18 states now who adopted the HISA for their official high school equivalency exam.
123 South Main, is that probably on the east side of the road there?
Getting your HSE is as easy as 123. It can be corny, too.
This is all very elementary, isn't it?
Yeah, the old Social Security building, and we've been there for 10 years now, and people still come to the Social Security building thinking that's what it is.
And there was recently a ribbon-cutting
Yes.
At the Chamber Health there to highlight some new computer lab equipment and online opportunities that they're providing, and it was very well-attended.
Yes, we partner with Joplin Naylor Reed, they provide tutors for our parents.
Well, if you advertise coffee, you're probably gonna just fill the place up.
We do have coffee, too.
So...
Yeah, we partner with the Job Center as well, you know, for participants who are in Tanith, or the MOA Program, MWA, or Voices, Future Links.
Your nursing and dental hygiene assessments, are they computer-based?
Yes, they are.
Are the same hours available to those students?
Oh, yes, yes, we prepare them for those entrance exams.
Do you partner with Southern at all?
Yes, we do, yes, we do.
Yeah, I can see you.
Oh, that would be fantastic, please do, yes. We have tutors for any, anybody that wants to study, really, so.
Does anybody have any additional questions for Ms. Dishman? I hope that you'll come back frequently, I enjoyed your happiness, we can all use a little bit of that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, great report.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good evening.
Okay, next we have Health and Dental Plans, followed by Financial Statements, Dr. Langford.
Well, the Health and Dental Plan, you get all the information, really, what I like to do is take the information you have on the action item and jot down notes and just see how we're tracking, and then it's all substantiated in the back. But we're really pleased at this point, considering we had some major claims this year, we had concerns that our health fund might be having some issues this year a little bit, but we are within $57,000 from where we were a year ago in the health fund. And so, we're very thankful, that just indicates that the staff is enjoying a little better health, and it's always a cyclical thing, and the health fund overall continues really to be a little stronger than we thought it might be at this time of the year. And then we also have the Dental Plan, and when we adopted the Dental Plan, switched from what we had to what we have now. We knew at the time that we were going to be depleting those resources, and depending, we've got a little 7% escalation factor into the cost, and we said it would be about seven years. Right now, we're a little bit better off in that seven year, but we are depleting those funds, and that was a planned spend-out of those money, and at some point, then it'll have to be addressed how we close that gap, but overall, the health fund, we feel good about it.
Thank you, Dr. Langford. Does anybody have any questions of Dr. Langford concerning his Health and Dental Report?
And finances?
Again, I refer you to that one page that I like to look at, Derek, that it's, numbers are meaningless unless you have comparison data, and so that's why we developed the spreadsheet a couple of years ago, and continue to provide that for you, that shows us that where our revenue is compared to this time last year, and if there are reasons we're behind, well, there was some state funding, for instance, last year that we received, the SEMA money, and another special appropriation, so that's why we're not as much as a year ago, but we didn't budget as much, so we're really online percentage-wise. The Dental Fund still is running, it's the only fund that's running behind, and we did a pre-therm analysis, and Shown and I looked at that, and really, there are no surprises, a lot of it has to do with moving things around and getting things changed from the Fund Two to Fund One, and so, overall, we feel very good about where this budget is at this time. You'll have accounts payable, a little bit later we'll be talking about, they're not reflected in this statement, and you'll see their damage in the next statement, going year, going, that's going on at the next month. But overall, the financial situation in the district, we've not encountered any surprises that really have us greatly alarmed. We did run some numbers today, and financial, or excuse me, railroad and utilities tax, totally out of our control, it's done at the state level, sent down to county, and they send that out to us. And last year, it took a drop, and we didn't like that, but we went back up this year about 25% above last year, so that is a policy force, so you just don't know how it all falls out till it all comes in, but we'll be looking at our local revenue, it's significantly, substantially been paid by now, and the state funding, they did fully fund the formula to the adequacy target on this payment. Now, the bad news is, is we're going to be having two years of where we will see no increase in state funding, as far as the calculations are concerned, then it will be driven totally by our student average daily attendance, that's what will drive it for us. They had only requested $10 million from the state, and we got a notice yesterday that they'd actually withdrawn that $10 million, so basically, the state of Missouri increase to the foundation formula this year is zero, and we don't see any reason it's going to increase next year, so we'll keep those things in mind going forward, and, you know, state funding, I would hate to be an elected senator or representative, I used to sit in Jefferson City and look out the window until the budget's closed, there's a constant trail of people up there knocking on the door telling them how much money they need, there's only so much money to go around. But the reality is, the adequacy target will not change, we will have the same adequacy target for four years, which means we will rely more heavily on our local revenues going forward for the next couple of years.
Thank you, Dr. Langford. Does anybody have any questions of Dr. Langford concerning our financial statements? Dr. Moss?
Okay, the next item is your enrollment report, and I think when Dr. Langford talks about our health plan tracking along similar to last year and in good standing, it is fair to note that our average attendance rate, which is on page two of that report, is what has not particularly been holding steady, particularly in the last 20 days. You'll see our comparison is down 1.5% over this time last year, and to go back to something, we always look at our substitute list, and we talk about the fill rates in our district, and I will let you know, this is not just happening with student attendance, it is also happening with the flu season, with staff attendance as well, and Friday, we had a record day, we had 105...
110 at the end of the day.
110 at the end of the day, because some had to go home through the day, faculty absences. And I want to brag on our HR, because they have kept the pedal to the metal this year in continuing to drive efforts to attract and retain quality substitutes, and on a Friday, when we had record-low faculty attendance because of illness, we had a 90% fill rate.
Thank you.
And so, that is a celebration, and I wanted to be sure you guys knew about that tonight. So, we are concerned that our average daily attendance is down a bit, because as Dr. Langford talks, they're not going to add to the adequacy and the foundation funding, so it's imperative that we do our best to keep our attendance up, because that drives funding. So, it's, there's nothing in a district that happens in isolation, and everything is tied to everything in the system, but those are some relevant points that I wanted to draw out for the board tonight in that report.
Thank you, Dr. Moss. Does anybody have any questions of Dr. Moss concerning our enrollment report? Pat, do we have any public comments this evening?
No, we do not.
Thank you, I would take a motion to approve our consent agenda.
So moved.
Thank you, Derek, it's removed.
Second.
Thank you, Lori, it's removed, and seconded we approve our consent agenda, please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes, that's a lot of policies that Brent was talking about earlier, just to let everybody know. That takes us to our regular agenda, and we are moving item seven up to number one, that's our JHS One-to-One Computer Devices. Dr. Saketa?
As I get the chairs ready for our guests. Over the last couple of years, actually, we've been planning for this time, whenever the life of the MacBooks that we have at the high school now would be coming to the end of their cycle in time to upgrade and do something different. We debated long and hard to continue with the MacBook that we have, or to look at other products. One of the products, the product that we looked at was Chromebooks, and the fact that we had experience in the middle schools, the eighth graders, with Chromebooks has given us an opportunity over the years to really see their effectiveness. In fact, we had a presentation with Chromebooks, you might remember quite some time ago, from one of the teachers in South, Heather Otterloo, did a wonderful job explaining the successes they have down there. So, what I want to do is let the gentleman talk to you about what we did, and they've done a fantastic job in really trying to get down to the bottom of, will the Chromebook that's out there now, which is a much better product, we believe, than what was, what came out earlier, in the last eight years while we've had Macs, will it do the job that we needed to do? Will it answer the question for every classroom in the school? And we know that in a couple of cases, there are some areas where we would definitely still need a Mac product to take care of the needs of the students and the teachers, and we will continue to do that, without question. So, that's kind of the frame of it, and these guys have really worked very hard to get to the bottom to answer the question, will the device do what we need it to do for the students?
As you can see in the action item, we listed a whole bunch of bullet points, but it was kind of almost the same bullet points we used for the eighth grade, because they are good with testing, and they seem to do everything within the curriculum that we needed to pretty much do, and so we had to send it to the high school in order to make sure it met the demands there, but Heather, if you go ahead and scroll down. We pulled together some pricing on the action item, just so you're aware, and you can see the, this is, we're predicting the Chromebooks will last four years, and we got, we got a vendor to help back us with most of that, and this is kind of the case we're looking at, too, that'll, that'll help keep it, if it drops or anything, and then it fits nice in here, and it doesn't add any, any really weight or width to the laptop itself, so if you guys, if you guys want to look at that. And then also, any kind of identification we want to put on the back, back of the laptop, and we can do that, too, and it's still, you can still read it because it's pretty clear, so. And so, if you look up here, we did, we did the pricing for the Chromebooks, because they'll last four years, and then we figured the Apple's will last about five years. There was a time when the Apple would last a little bit longer, but with the OS revisions that come out every year, that, that's kind of shrinking the life, the life cycle of the Apple, where we can upgrade it, keep upgrading it, so, five years, so, go to the next slide, Heather, this is, this is the most important one, because we brought up the Chromebook to five years, and then the difference... Go ahead, go down a little further. Once you compare everything, the difference, the Chromebooks versus the MacBooks, it's a $1.9 million difference, so, the Chromebooks only cost like 1.2, and the Ayers will cost 3.1.
Over a five-year period.
And what we did was, we got with Dr. Langford, so we could make sure that we looked and analyzed this as close as possible, so that we had a fair comparison when it comes to the years, and we sat down and looked at this, and we looked at, and what you see on those line items are all the things, and the products, or the packages that we would have to have for either product to be functional over that period, so that's the total cost.
Okay, go to the PowerPoint. Go to the PowerPoint.
So, what we're gonna do now is, we're gonna let the gentleman talk here that actually did the work. They went into the classrooms, and we have Chris Young, who's our instructional coach, and works with all of our professional development, our teachers, he does, has a big job there at the high school, taking care of those things, and then James Fulgusong, Aaron Brown, and Mike, Mike down at the end here, they all were very highly involved with going in to every classroom, talking to teachers, talking to students, and really looking at the devices when it comes to will it work, so I'll let them talk.
Actually, we purchased some, some Chromebooks, and they were issued to the students, 50 of them, and the high school techs and Chris kind of went around with the students, and mirrored them in each class, and then interviewed them afterwards to see... mirrored them in each class, and then interviewed them afterwards to see what they thought about the Chromebook, and if they had any issues. And so, so basically, this is how we, we set up our test. You know, we purchased Chromebooks and gave them to 50 students, and then we asked them, you know, will the Chromebook do the job? Is it sufficient enough to do the job? And here are the results. Well, excuse me. These are the, these are the courses that we took the Chromebooks into, the departments. And then, the next slide is the actual, the classes that were, that we took the Chromebooks into. And then, so, one of the, one of the main questions was the word processing and spreadsheets, because that's kind of an every, that's a daily use. And right now, we're kind of a blend between Google Docs and Microsoft Office. But also, Microsoft Office has now come free for educational purposes through Office 365. And the only, the only thing you cannot get in Office 365, the free version, is Access and Publisher. So, everything else translates pretty, pretty evenly across the board, as far as Word, Excel, PowerPoint. So, when asked the students, we asked the students, what, what did they use for the WordPress, those, those spreadsheets? There's the breakdown up there. And out of the students, they, they had no negative responses for either program.
If we go to Chromebooks, will they only have access to Google, or will they still have access to Microsoft?
They will have access to Office 365.
Okay.
And then, we also asked them about their presentation software, and it's the same thing. There was no negative reviews. You see, up there, I showed Office 365 has a complete web-based suite that works with Chromebook, and is free for education. Online textbooks, there was no issue. I mean, you, you wouldn't really encounter any of being web-based driven, most of the textbooks, but we were concerned with like Flash or Java, and how that would all just stack up on the Chromebook, but nobody ran into any issues at all. PDF access. We did run into a little snare here when we first handed out the Chromebooks and started using them. We didn't put Kami on it, which is what we use at the middle schools. And once we got Kami on there and set up for them, they could read and edit PDFs without an issue. And Kami is an additional cost, but that's also figured into that on the action item, on the money versus money. Online videos generated in Canvas, the students said they didn't have any issues. Seventy-eight out of 79 teachers did not experience any issues with students watching videos in class. And one of the comments, when we're going back through, looking at this, it just said, yes, videos uploaded into Canvas. And so, I, I don't, I think, because some of the questions, when they answered it, even though they said yes, they were saying what it worked with. And that's kind of what it looked like on that answer, but we couldn't find any issues. No? Okay. That 16% of the teachers said they would like more PD built around embedding videos into Canvas. So, we're going to look at trying to address that next year. And then, it's the same thing with the online videos and just a browser. The only, the only problems, there was some negative responses, but it's because the websites were blocked. The videos were blocked from displaying. And that's through our content filter, and it's not a device issue. So, and there is, they could either download it embedded in Canvas, like on the previous slide we stated, or that there's actually a form that they can submit to the principal, and he'll review the site, and then it'll come to us, and we'll review the site, and then if it's okay, we'll go ahead and unblock it. Special programs or apps used for specialized courses. There were seven negative responses, and a lot of them were around Adobe Suite, which they have a light version, but it does, not everything translates well to the light version. Extemp Genie, which is the, for U.S. Constitution and Debate, and Keynote. And since, since this time, we've looked at Keynote, it's actually in the cloud now, and it can be used on the Chromebook, and Extemp Genie is in the cloud now, can also be used on Chromebooks. It's actually a Google extension, so.
But as I understand it, Eric, this is one of those areas that if it's accessible, if it's a need that's accessible, there will be devices in the lab that will run it.
Yes, absolutely. And we're not, we're not pulling out any of our current labs, because most of the places that ran into issues were like Jet HD, Journalism, and they already have access to labs in that area. And then, like, what you'll see later, like, one problem came up was for the art program, especially when they moved to 3D. So, we're put, and in the write-up, in the comparable write-up, we're also going to supply iPads to that, to that art classroom, so they can meet their needs with any kind of drawing, plugging in a tablet, or any kind of drawing program that they need. Online graphing calculators, it's all web-based, and there's no issues using these, and students reported this also, but they, they really prefer the handheld calculator that they get with, in class anyways. Website and research access, there's no issues reported, except for the blocked videos, and that was, that, those are just blocked websites. Photo editing software, this is kind of where, where we do run into a bit of a problem. Most students reported that they don't use any kind of photo editing software, but there was a couple. And there is Photoshop, a light version of that, which you can crop, resize, turn black and white, and also touch up, but it's not a full version of Photoshop. And so, if we, if we need to, we'll look at Keynotes in the cloud, which you can touch up some photos with Keynote, if you put it in the, in that file, or Pixlr or Gimp, which are free, and they can, they can edit photos. Respondance lockdown browser, the reason, we, we tested it, and we did run into some issues, but the techs soon discovered how to get it to work with the Chromebook, and then after that, there was no more issues. And what Responds is, it works within our, our Canvas LMS, and it locks students from going anywhere else except to take that test. And so, we wanted to make sure that worked also. While most of the students reported no issues, there was a mixture of, there was 5% that weren't sure, and they would like to do some additional testing. And then, there was 5% that stated an issue with Photoshop, which we kind of touched on earlier. The known issue that teachers reported were Adobe Suite, Keynote, iMovie, Photo Booth, and Storage. And, well, Google, our Google Suite, we have unlimited storage per person. And then, if we do bring in Office 365, once we start doing that, there's, it's like six terabytes a person, or something like that. So, I don't think, I don't think we're going to have any issues with storage when, if we adopt the Chromebook. And then Adobe, we've kind of, Kami does the PDFs, and then the other stuff, like for Photoshop and stuff like that, we, Gimp or, or the light version of Photoshop. And I mean, there are products that will work around. I know change is going to be difficult, but we're going to work with them and make sure that they have all the right tools to complete everything, if that means putting in a extra lab for that class, because they use such high-end products, we're going to do that. Do you guys have any? Oh, yeah. That's Accident Forgiveness, which we were charging $50 at the high school, is going to go down to $10.
And that's kind of a big deal. If you've got three high schoolers, and you buy the Accident Forgiveness, that's $150.
Well, we have a family plan for 100 bucks.
Yeah, that's right. That's true.
But it'd only be 20.
Yeah. That's right. That's right.
Eric, was your survey just to the students? Did you survey teachers on what they thought?
Yes.
Number two, are teachers going to keep using MacBooks? And if so, how are these going to communicate with each other? Because we have issues with that at Southern, and we have to tell the students, do not use XYZ programs, change it, and we provide the service for them to switch it. So, how, how, how are you going to address that, if that's an issue here?
Well, the teachers are going to keep their MacBook, and so, they'll be using that. But since a lot of the learning is done through Canvas, and Chris can probably speak better to this than I can, but we, that's one reason we tested Canvas and the lockdown browser. And since we do a lot of our research and stuff online, we've made, we wanted to make sure they could hit the sites that they needed to go. And we do have a way to unblock it if they can't. The, the biggest issue would be Flash, because a lot of videos are done by Flash, but that's going away this year. So, there's no more support for it, so websites should, that should start being, dropping off, not be an issue of websites. I don't see that in the foreseeable future as an issue.
Yeah. Part of the process, too, we wanted to make sure we were very inclusive with all department areas, making sure we questioned teachers to see what specific program needs they had for their curriculum. But these guys were also very intentional with including a very diverse student population as well when it came to testing. So, from the course list, you see, it's from AP courses all the way down. So, we kind of touched base on all those different programs, and because Canvas is web-based, and has a lot of different opportunities for PDF submission or text entry, we didn't really stumble across any issues.
You know, I would say, what we found when, when interviewing the kids is that, you know, if you, if you're, if they're using a Google Doc, most of the time, that's when they're writing something to submit to Canvas or to the teacher. And when they're using the Office Suite or Office 365, most of the time, that's when a teacher's created a document and sent it out to Canvas to share, and they download it. And so, that's, that's the version it's in, and so, that's the version they're going to use. But either way, they would be able to access either, either option.
And Google Drive is directly connected to Canvas as well, so it's not a separate login.
Will this require teachers to have to redo? Because I know a lot of them just have, they don't have a textbook anymore. It's just the online. So, is this going to require teachers to have to go back and reformat all of their curriculum? It'll work?
Since, since the bulk of it's located in Canvas, that shouldn't really be an issue. Some of it, we did come across some classes, they do use Keynote extensively, but then, you know, we also tested that, and it does work in the cloud now. So, so they'll, they'll transfer all that stuff over there.
Okay. And on this chart where you said you moved the Chromebook up to five years for the comparison, so is the company guaranteeing us? Because I know our Macs, we could get seven years out of sometimes. So, are we guaranteed five years of life expectancy out of a Chromebook, or is it four?
No, the five-year comparison, we did, we multiplied it out to, to give that Chromebook a fifth year, just to do the price comparison itself. So, we took everything we had to buy for the Chromebook.
Okay.
And multiplied it, so it would equal five years, just to do the price comparison.
So, it would be as equal as possible, in terms of using it for five years. I just want to add that Mike, you might remember Mike McCloskey used to be over here, and his addition to this group here is, is, is big, is important, too. And what all that they did, and Aaron's experience, and James coming on, they've really worked really well together at the high school. And they found a lot of things when they surveyed the kids up front, because to make this change, we had to make sure that we were operating on all cylinders with the Chromebooks to be able to see if it was right. And so, they went through a lot of work to do that. And then also, Chris, once again, he went department by department at the beginning of the year and talked to how many teachers. I mean, we really talked to a lot of teachers. So, we, they've spent a lot of time really analyzing this. I appreciate that.
And are there different levels of Chromebooks? Because at school, I get a lot of complaints about Chromebooks, but maybe that's the older version of Chromebooks?
The, the older versions...
Students tend to buy them and then say, I wasted my money. And then they go buy...
Five years ago, when I, when I asked you guys to renew the MacBook Airs, I probably wouldn't have, I wouldn't have gone with Chromebook, just because they weren't sturdy, they didn't have the extensions they have now to make them really compatible. But we are going with a little bit higher-end Chromebook. It's a Dell, and it's got two USBs, which they usually just come with one, so the, so the students will have access to that. And that's, yeah. The, the Dells, they seem to be a little bit more tougher than the Lenovo and, and the other ones that we looked at, so.
The computer had some weight.
It's kind of heavy, yeah.
Kids are in shape.
They're already complaining about the weight.
And we did, we did have like 13-inch and 11-inch, and the students want to stay with an 11-inch. And that's one thing that if we went with MacBook Airs again, they don't offer the 11-inch anymore.
Is that heavy, because the computer's heavy, or the case is heavy?
I think it's a combination.
Or it's a combination? Because it's really a heavy computer.
I think without the case, it's pretty similar to the, to a MacBook.
Is it? Okay.
And they don't use cases with the MacBooks anymore.
Right. Okay.
Keep them covered, guys. Save them first.
So, how can we go from 50 to 10? Because we're going with a cheaper computer?
50 to...
$50 for the parents to $10 for the parents.
Yes.
Okay.
So, Eric, is this going to meet our budget? Are we going to, can we afford this?
I'll, I'll bring in my expert on that.
Heather, can we afford this?
Shelley, take it, would you? The thing you bear in mind about budgets, and personally, I was always apprehensive of telling Mike, you've got 500,000 every year. There might be times he doesn't need 500,000, because some years, we're going to need another 300,000 over here. So, at the end of the day, if you project forward, we do have about a $500,000 budget for, and you use that budget to pay off the leases. Well, it doesn't make sense to pay three and a half cents, or percent, to lease when we're only getting 1.5 on our money. So, what I've told Eric, the strategy should be, we will pay for these computers up front. Now, next year, depending on how they sell computers and what have you, you may not have 500,000 next year. That budget would be adjusted to, because, you know, sometimes people get so hung up about what their budget is, and it's all in one day, which is June 30th, when really, we, we have to think in terms of how it flows. So, my recommendation to the board is, if you choose to do this, we pay for these machines up here, don't do anything leased, we don't need to be paying interest, it makes no sense to cost us more than we're getting for our money. And then, they understand, next year, they won't get as much, but you know what? They don't need as much, because we've got the computer, so.
What are we doing with the MacBooks?
Well...
Because that's a lot of computers.
We're going to put them out for a bid.
They'll go down for gold, is that it?
We're hoping, I mean, they should go for about 100 bucks.
Right.
But I've been bid by that before, so I'm going to say 50.
Okay.
But, yeah, to recover costs.
Yeah, to help recover some of the costs. That's what we're, that's what we're really thinking, too.
Are you going to let the students purchase them? Or are you going to like surplus them, like when we have our auction? If a student wants to purchase one, are we going to allow them?
I, I think that's something we can talk about, because, I mean, since we didn't buy them outright, and we did lease them, it's something we can talk about, because since they were leased, it's how the lease company wants to separate from, from the lease. And I mean, we've kind of already went through the lease on those, so it's something, something to talk about.
We'll have to surplus them in our normal manner, but we'll, we'll visit about that.
I think that's a good idea, make them available to students if they're interested in buying.
I have noticed some college students that would like to buy them.
Yeah. Do I, I, yeah, thank you, Lori. Do you, do we have a motion to approve this purchase of...
So moved.
Chromebooks, 2,300 of them.
Buy a whole bunch of them.
For $717,600, which Dr. Langford assures us we can afford.
Only knowing, because we can afford it on that motion.
That's right. So, the motion is by Derek, is that correct? And was there a second? Thank you, Deborah. It's been moved, and secondly, we approved this. Is there any discussion? I want to thank everybody for coming this evening. This is a big purchase for the district. Please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. You guys must be a pretty big deal to get moved up six spaces on our gym.
The matching shirts did it.
So, that takes us to our accounts payable, and that takes us back to Dr. Langford.
And I want to yield to Shelley. I've been relying on her for a whole lot, and I said, you just talk to the board about this accounts payable.
Okay, well, we're presenting the bill list for tonight in the amount of $2,61,582.40. You can find the details in your packet. You'll notice that this month's amount is significantly... You'll notice that this month's amount is significantly less than the same amount time last year or even like last month. And the main reason for that is the timing of the board meeting and the cutoff of when we had to provide the packets to you. So there's no monthly payroll in this amount, which our February twentieth, or every twentieth of the month is our monthly payroll, which is the largest. So the salary and benefits for that are not in these expenses. You'll, next month, just be prepared for a much larger, a larger number. But I didn't answer any other questions you may have.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Shelley?
I'm moving to repair our bills. Can we afford it?
Yes.
I second.
Uh, it's been moved by Derek and seconded by Dr. Fort. If we pay our accounts payable, please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes, thank you for that report. Capital expenditures, back to you, Dr. Seketa.
Okay, Dave Pettit's going to make his way up here and he'll put some detail to what I'm about to tell you a little bit about. As you know, every year we go around to our schools and we spend a lot of time talking to the principals about their needs in the school when it comes to upkeep and to long-term needs that we track through our GoFMX system with heating and air and, and different things and so on. And uh, there's some things in the, in this budget that we want to do annually, like for instance asbestos removal. And uh, so Dave's going to talk to you about that. And what we've tried to do this year is go as far as we can across the district when it comes to making sure as many schools get covered as possible. And safety and security is always high on the priority list as we can continue to leave that as part of what we do.
Sure.
Well, it's, it's always a pleasure to get to, to look at the things that we need to take care of and know that we can come to you all and bring those needs and hopefully get those needs met. As Dr. Seketa alluded to, I did some ciphering, so to speak, today. There's actually a total of sixty projects and we are going to touch twenty of our building campuses with this year's capital outlay. And so we're, we're really being able to take care of some needs, both large and small with this amount. And so we want to bring to you tonight this cap outlay budget for the 2021 school year. What we're looking at is a total of two million, six hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars for facilities capital outlay, five hundred thousand dollars for our technology department, and then a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for food service capital outlay for some equipment replacement. Some of the larger projects that you will look at on there is two roof replacements and repairs that we're going to need to take care of. We have our annual basketball goal inspections, LED lighting upgrade. I'll remind you that we did that last year, close to the same amount of money. We will apply for rebates again this year. We got about, I think it was forty-two thousand dollars in rebates last year. So we will look into those rebates again for the projects this year. The buses, that is a purchase of five standard buses and then one handicap bus. So a total of six buses are included in that budget as well. And some HVAC replacements as we, uh, it was around the ninety-nine, um, two thousand year that we did a large-scale replacement and some of those are starting to come due. And so we're trying to get ahead of that and do the replacements as we come along with that. So we bring that to you tonight for your approval.
Thank you Dave. Does anybody have any questions today concerning the capital outlay budget? Is BGT, is that Beacon?
Buildings, Grounds and Transportation.
Oh, okay. So the barn needs roof replacement?
Yeah, it's a, it's a metal roof. Uh, the nearest we can estimate that roof is forty years old.
Better metal.
It's served us well. We have, we have, we have skylights that are installed there and then we have some naturally occurring skylights as well.
I would move that we approve the three point three million dollars for capital outlay budget for fiscal year 2021.
Thank you Brent, thank you Derek. I do have one more question on the technical, technology services capital outlay. What is that? Is that, I mean, that's, is that part of the purchase we just made? And we're, we're showing the allocation here. Thank you. I mean, I was like, wow.
We've made a lot.
Eric's got a pretty good department.
She's not those Macs.
What are we paying those guys right now? Okay. Uh, it's been moved and seconded and I need to stop talking, so please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes, thank you very much. That brings us to our purchase of forty sets of textbooks and resource materials for Franklin Technology Center's Adult Practical Nursing Program, Dr. Moss.
Yes, and as Penny comes to the table, she's going to talk to us about needs in adult practical nursing.
Right, well, my request is minimal compared to those that went before me, so it should be easy. Now, we were given permission last year by finance to purchase our soft, our software and our textbooks for our practical nursing program during this fiscal year due to the time constraints of our budget. Our practical nursing program begins the first week of August. And so with the, the cutoff of the July one and trying to get the textbooks and the, the software in, that's where we were allowed to go ahead and purchase last year. We, it was actually a double purchase last year, but now we are on track. And so if we can get this going, we'll have forty nursing students beginning first week of August.
It looks like these textbooks are typically paid through their costs, through their tuition.
And they are, they are. All of the textbooks and software, this is all part of their, the student fees. And then so nothing is taken out of state dollars or, or the district's budget.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions concerning this purchase? I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
Thank you Derek.
I'll second.
Thank you Deborah. It's been moved and seconded, we approve this request for forty sets of textbooks and resource materials. Please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes, thank you so much.
I have a question for Penny, go before you leave.
Yes ma'am.
Do you know about that new grant that's out that will pay students to go back to finish a two-year degree? Or, you do know about that?
Yes ma'am, yes ma'am.
Big smile right there.
Good deal, okay.
Yes, we are in partnership with a career center.
Okay.
And we are part of the skill-up program, so we've been approved for that. Yes, thank you.
So you don't get to leave anyway. So uh, our next item is purchase predictor exam software for Franklin Text-
Yeah, that's me as well.
Brian, Adult Practical Nursing Program.
Yes, that's the software that goes along with the textbooks that's in line for the NCLEX testing to get them prepared, get the students prepared for their practical ni, uh, oh, practical license, licensure.
Is the test for that different than the test for RN?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yes, it is. And this predictor software is actually geared for the LPN program and for the NCLEX. I move that we make that purchase.
I'll second you.
Thank you Lori, thank you Derek. It's been moved and seconded, we approve this purchase as well. Please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. Those are easy.
I told you.
Thank you so much.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
So that moves us to item number five, Mystery Science Elementary Adoption. Ms. Wongi.
I'm continuing with easy.
Awesome.
So for elementary science, just on the pertinent facts to give you some history, in 2016, those state standards were adjusted and changed. From a district perspective, at the elementary level, I went back to probably 2000 when we actually had a textbook adoption. About 2015 is when we stopped, 2015, 16, the kits, science kits, that we kind of went through that phase. Dr. Gilbert did great work with our elementary teachers on writing some science curriculum. And so what this will provide with Mystery Science is equitability of access to this resource. It is what K2 is primarily using anyway and really feel this resource will allow equal access to all of our elementary schools, using it as the primary source for K2 and supplemental for 3.5. So there are some things in there for 3.5 they would like to use.
As we look down at the fiscal note, funded through the elementary curriculum budget, and we can expect that there will be some budget adjustment in our curriculum budget going forward because we're really trying to look at where, where do you find autonomy in how teachers teach and what they choose to differentiate within their classroom? But where do we need the non-negotiables to provide consistency across the district? Because we have students that move about and we need consistent scope and sequence and consistent chunks of instruction across our campus. So we've looked at Eureka Math, we've looked it into reading, now we're addressing the science issue. I think we're finding that balance between total autonomy, but what should be the non-negotiables? And so I think this is taking us forward in how we instruct our students.
And this aligns well with our university standards and yes.
Because they are more rigorous.
Yes, and it, it's a, it's a lot of hands-on as well. One of the big barriers, working with the science team, has just been addressing the supply need. And so this team of teachers, they went above and beyond for me and they've priced out supplies. And so that will be the, the second phase of this where I'm working on how to ensure they have appropriate funding to get the supplies they need to do their hands-on experience in the elementary classroom. So um, I'm not concerned that we'll be able to get that taken care of. It's just, this will be step one and then we'll work with that for step two. Because as you know, science is a very intriguing, hands-on subject. And so the more we can equip our kids with those opportunities, the better. We did look at some big-ticket items. I'm sure they were very conservative with their recommendations to me of what they found. It is very easy to get into hundreds of thousands of dollars when you're looking at a full science curriculum with supplies. And so this is an extremely, extremely conservative recommendation for them to get what they need.
I think that's part of the concern is are we doing enough here? And uh, you know, I'm, you know, in preparing for the meeting, we have the opportunity to review what is being presented and it seemed to me as though there was some investigation that was performed and I'm satisfied, if you're satisfied, that this is going to get it done for our students.
I think funding supplies will be the big piece for them. And the teachers have worked and put some stuff together for us to make that happen. And specific supplies, and they've, they've even done supplemental lessons as well. So where they don't feel like it's meeting the mustard on particular standards and topics, they've worked in supplementing that as well.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you Sarah.
Do we have a motion?
I would move that we approve the purchase of Mystery Science for twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and sixty-seven dollars.
I'll second that.
Thank you Brent, thank you Derek. It's been moved and seconded, we approve this purchase, please vote.
Yes.
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 Mr. President, can I make one observation?
Please, Doctor.
Uh, your superintendent sent out a little thought last week, something about if you don't know where you're going, there's no such thing as a prevailing wind. That was good, I liked that.
That's pretty deep, let's stop and thank him.
I, I just want to commend the board and commend the directors and administrators for what they've been able to accomplish because we do have a comfort level. We need in February to be planning what's going to be happening after school starts. And uh, Dave, I said, "We, we can't wait till June to approve your work list. You've got to get this thing going." Penny made the comment about waiting till June to buy their supplies and now Sarah's doing that. So um, if you have confidence in your budget and then you have everybody understand, just like we told the technology people, we're going to do it this year, but next year that'll be reduced a little bit because then that lets money backflow into availability. So I commend the directors and the boards and from a, the part of the finance, the resources should be utilized to best serve our students. And you cannot do that if you don't have a direction to get the prevailing wind in February to push us toward that new school year.
Along those same lines, it should be noted that we're, when we were reviewing what Sarah, Ms. Wongi just recommended, it seems as though the district is receiving the benefit of discounts because we're buying early and for multiple years. So uh, we're doing our best to budget and plan accordingly. And so uh, I applaud their efforts in all those things, looking out for us. Uh, so I believe we did pass that. And so that moves us to the E-rate, which I've already talked to Dr. Seketa about. He's going to have some problems with me, I gotta, we're going to fight on this. We're not going to fight at all. I'm sorry, did we not vote? I, I thought we did, I'm sorry, please vote.
I think you did.
I thought we did vote.
We did.
Dr. Moss, are you-
Well, he threw us off there.
No, I waited.
So we voted?
Okay, alright.
Yep.
Tune in.
It's okay, I get, I'm the same way, Dr. Moss. Eric, we're back with you, buddy.
They, they've extended the E-rate for wireless one more year. And since we've kind of got all of our switches and the things that we need, the wireless access points and everything, they've been upgraded through E-rate. They, they've also added and will allow us to do APCs, the battery backups this year. And that's one of the things that's starting to really fail within. We just had one yesterday at, at the high school in the gym fail and we were scrambling around because of the, the basketball night there and everything going on there at night. But um, we were able to pull one, but it doesn't fit the rack, so. But we're looking at, I mean, we had like three or four dropped last year and then three or four dropped the year before. And they're just really starting to drop, so. So we're asking through E-rate, which we only pay twenty percent, to get sixty-two more battery backups. And that'll really keep our foundation of our network stable. And it won't just drop out temporarily and then we'll have to plug it into an actual outlet and it won't be protected until we get a battery backup in. We'll, we'll replace all that, they should be insured from there on out, so.
So who pays the eighty percent?
The federal government.
Okay, so we're paying twenty percent on a fifty-five thousand dollar investment, it looks like. That's- That's good.
That helps.
Does that include spare, any spares or? Do you keep a spare for the battery backup?
That's, one, one of the ones that we put in the high school today was a spare and that's why it doesn't fit the rack because it, it's made for a little bit bigger, deeper rack. But, but we did have one and we were able to, it's, it's kind of just sitting in there. We don't like that because there is some third-party vendors that go in that room and we don't want them to mess with it or trip over it. But we had to get it up in London for last night.
So in reviewing the quotes, the questions I had, you know, I didn't have questions about those that were not accepted because they didn't meet the bid specs. That was perfectly understandable. What wasn't clear to me is that we didn't accept a more competitive bid because uh, it didn't include freight costs and it wants to be paid in full upfront. And so I don't know what, not challenging at all what we're recommend, what's recommended, just want a clarification. I don't, because I don't understand what freight is involved in. Obviously, there is freight in batteries, I mean, quite a bit. I just don't have any idea.
It's pretty, I don't, I don't know what the, the cost would be, but it is coming from New Jersey. I mean, we would be more than happy to take that bid, but that means sometime before July one, when we actually get the product, that we, that the district would have to pay. But part of the RFP was, we pay the twenty, then they go after the federal government pretty much for the eighty percent. And so we did, the only, the only thing we're on the hook for is the twenty. And so they didn't meet that requirement. What's that?
Essentials wants us to pay it all upfront.
They want us to pay it all upfront. And they, and they did, in that price also, they have not included freight, which I don't think it'll be ten grand worth of freight, but-
Right, that's what my problem was. So thank you, I mean, I think-
We can, we can take Essentials because I'm pretty sure they bid it, they bid uh, the, the equipment that we were looking at. But because they didn't meet the RFP, that's why we kind of disqualified them. Because we'd have to pay everything upfront and we don't know what the freight costs would be.
And the RFP specified we would just pay our twenty percent, so they didn't follow that.
Right.
Fair enough, I needed that clarification, I appreciate it. So uh, we have a motion.
So moved.
Thank you Derek.
Second.
Thank you, Doctor Joseph. Thank you, Doctor Joseph. It's been moved and secondly, we approve this purchase of batteries for our computer systems. Please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. That takes us to number eight, policies updates for first reading. Dr. Moss.
Yes, as Mr. Jordan shared at the beginning of the meeting, the first ones have to do with employees that leave the district as a result of sexual misconduct, and if you look through the, the policy notes, it's really referring to criminal sexual misconduct, and to me, it's extreme behavior that we would hopefully be prosecuting anyway. And then it also begs to mind, now, if people resign in lieu of a hearing, does that mean in order to give due process, we're required to have a hearing? So you'll also notice in these policies throughout that the superintendent is instructed to consult attorneys throughout this whole process, because until these laws get vetted through the process, or there's legal challenge, sometimes you're not quite sure, it's a gray area of how do we proceed? So they're just cautioning that we always need to seek legal advice when something like this should come up, which we would anyway. So those are some highlights of those first policies. And then also, as Mr. Jordan said, the school admissions really deals with military families, and then some use of proof of age with affidavit as opposed to always having to be a birth certificate and things such as that.
Thank you, Dr. Moss. Does anybody have any questions with Dr. Moss concerning these policies? I would accept a motion for approval of first reading.
So moved.
Thank you, Mike.
Second.
Thank you, Deborah. It's been moved and secondly, we approve these policies for first reading. It's item eight on our regular agenda. Please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. That brings us to our plus deltas, Dr. Moss.
Oh, I have several, as I just kept making those as we were talking, you know, starting with the Adult Education and Literacy update, Ms. Dishman talked about me speaking at the graduation, but I will tell you, that is one of the most heartwarming graduations or programs or services, whatever we want to call that we have, because the excitement in the crowd when that group gets their diploma is just amazing, and I would encourage anybody to come and, and see that. It's, it's a, it's a real, real good. I'm happy that we're able to take some of the cost burden off of our families with moving from the $50 to the $10. I think that's significant. And the cap outlay, you know, that is really a testament to hard work that's happened over the last three, four years with Dr. Sackett, Dave going around, they meet with every principal, they highlight where are our needs, but more importantly, in our strategic planning, we talk about being effective and efficient. What we're now seeing evidenced as we talk about HVACs, roofs, buses, I think we're finally in a cycle of replacement that we've kind of started to ease into, and now it's becoming more regular, and we're not in emergency mode with our maintenance across the district like we have been. And I'm really proud of the hard work that has been put into that, and a lot of our cap outlay projects that have been completed have been under budget. So I want to brag on those guys.
I, I would like to sound $10 computer insurance fee, you know, I, it's my hope that, I believe that that's a, that's not enough required participation. I hope that the lower cost encourages more kids to participate in that, because more families can probably afford that $10 insurance fee, if you will, and might make that a healthier program all the way around, because I'm sure that the $50 fee was cost prohibitive for some of our families. So I hope that that's, that pays off for the district and our students. Anybody else?
I just wanted to commend our administration team, because I know that they've been going above and beyond and working extra hard, meeting with different groups around the community, getting the word out about the no tax increase bond issue. And I know that's a lot of extra work for you guys, so we appreciate it.
And it's our priority till April 10.
A lot of late nights and early mornings, I'm sure, so.
And this is not a delta about our meeting necessarily, but it's good news I want parents to know about. At Southern, we've started a program called On the Move, and so if we have a Joplin High School student who's on free reduced lunch, they can take six hours of college credit for free. Every semester, dual credit, which is huge. If they're not on free reduced lunch, they can take it at $50 a credit hour, and normal credit hour is 220. So they can get a huge chunk of their college degree completed before they even leave high school. So it's called On the Move, your high school counselors should know about it.
That's awesome.
I just want, I just want to say thanks to Eric and Heather for all their work on the Chromebooks. This has went on for two years, this has been a ton of work, and Dave, and, and Mike, and Justin back there, and Rick, and Jim, as well as all the work they do as directors. It's, it's a lot, and I appreciate their work. And thank you, Dr. Moss, for mentioning it.
I wanted to say congratulations to the Joplin High School basketball team. Jeff Nater and the team winning the conference. Last time Memorial did, it was 78, and Parkwood was 81. So congratulations.
I suspect that has a lot to do with Dr. Gilbert's efforts at the high schools. Same in the back, I just thought of. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Derek, thank you, Deb. It's been moved and secondly, please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes, thank you, everybody.